It's 5:30 PM. I would like to call our work session to order. Mr. Parker, could you please call the roll?
Yes. Ms. Daniels?
Here.
Ms. Davis?
Present.
Ms. Green?
Present.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Ms. Rawls?
Present.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Present.
Ms. Bowers?
Present. Thank you. Before we begin any committee business, I just wanted to note, um, the city is experiencing some technical difficulties with Channel 20 this evening, uh, but the YouTube link is live, so if you're viewing, please feel free to view on YouTube and the video will be aired on Channel 20 tomorrow. The first order of committee business this evening is with the Administration Committee. We have two bills for discussion, Bill Four of 2024 and Bill Five of 2024, and one resolution, Resolution 52 of 2024. Mr. Parker, could you please read Bill Four of 2024 into the record, please?
Yes. An ordinance delegating authority to the Secretary of Transportation, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, Department of Transportation, to file with the Public Utility Commission as may be required for and on behalf of the City of Harrisburg. An application for the construction slash reconstruction of the Seventeenth Street Bridge crossing over railroad property and for the appropriation of necessary rights of way.
Thank you. Good evening, how are you this evening?
Good evening, well, thank you.
Great. Uh, if you wouldn't mind providing, well, just reintroducing yourself, I know you've been before us before, but for the benefit of those viewing and members of the public, and then if you wouldn't mind sharing a brief synopsis of the bill.
Sure. My name is Joel Siders, I'm a relatively new city engineer for, for the City of Harrisburg. Uh, this project's an interesting one, it's, uh, part of the I-83 widening project, uh, with the new on and off ramps at Seventeenth Street, Pendott has kind of flagged the bridge for, uh, replacement and... I guess, uh, part of this, uh, ordinance would be to, uh, kind of delegate, uh, Pendott to kind of speak on our behalf when dealing with the Public Utility Commission as well as Norfolk Southern during right-of-way, uh, negotiations.
Okay, thank you. I don't have, excuse me, I don't have any immediate questions, I'll open the floor to my colleagues who may have some additional questions for you. Um, I will begin to my left with Councilman Jones, any questions?
Thank you, President Bowers, um, not at this time, I don't, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Rodriguez?
Thank you, Madam Chair, uh, thank you for joining us this evening, no questions.
Okay. Councilwoman Rawls?
Uh, good evening, thank you for joining us, it's a pleasure seeing you again. I just wanted to know if there was anything, like, um, how it would impact the public, anything we should know that maybe wasn't said in the, um, the resolution, I mean, excuse me, the bill, just for any?
Not that I could foresee a, uh, a standard bridge replacement, it just happens to involve the railroad, which makes it tricky to, to deal with.
Okay, thank you. That's it for me, President Bowers.
Thank you. Vice President Green?
Uh, thank you for being here tonight, but I don't have any questions.
Thank you. Councilwoman Davis, any questions?
Yes, thank you, President Bowers. Is this the bridge, and thank you for being here first and foremost, is this the bridge right there at Seventeenth and, um, right before you get to the highway, is that the bridge that's gonna be replaced from Seventeenth Street?
Yeah, it'd be between, uh, Paxton Street and, uh, Brookwood.
Yes, okay. Just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Yes, right, right where the, uh, on ramps come.
Yes, yes. And I know the railroad is right there too, so there's gonna be some coordinating and, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Councilwoman Daniels, any questions?
No, just when do you think, um, the application will need to be submitted within?
For, for what, what part?
Well, it says that we're delegating to you the authority to submit an application for the, the construction that Pendott will ultimately handle, but it's not the, not exactly happening right now, right now, so like, when do you think that?
Uh, I guess, part of this is to get the process started, so they'll have to start going through right-of-way negotiations, and once they clear all that, then construction can begin, I think it's slated for, um, next year.
The, the construction itself to start, uh, but the?
Right-of-way can start as soon as we, uh, give them, uh, authority to speak on our behalf.
Okay. That's it for me, thank you.
Thank you. Any other additional questions?
Madam Chair, just, just for the public's clarification, this particular bridge we own, and the operative part of this piece of legislation is when it's done, we own everything again, and we will have more right-of-way and space to take care of them before we start it, but we couldn't really have the capacity to do this ourselves, um, and it is coming in conjunction with the next piece of legislation.
Yes.
So, but that's, this is our bridge, they've agreed to take care of this for us, uh, and we agreed to make sure we would take care of whatever they acquire in our name in this process. There's a chance something will come back to you when, if real square footage is acquired as part of a dedication to the city.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying. If there are no further questions, I move to add Bill Four of 2024 to our next legislative session agenda for a vote. Next, we have Bill Five of 2024. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Yes. Excuse me. Bill Five of 2024. An ordinance delegating authority to the Secretary of Transportation, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, Department of Transportation, to file with the public, Pennsylvania Public Utility Commission, as may be required for and on behalf of the City of Harrisburg, an application for the construction slash reconstruction of the McClay Street Bridge crossing over railroad property and for the appropriation of any necessary rights of way.
Thank you. Mr. Siders, do you have anything to add relating to Bill Five of 2024?
For this project, it's the replacement of two Pendott-owned bridges over Norfolk Southern and Paxton Creek, they happen to be, uh, on eith, either side are city-owned roads, and that's kind of where, um, there could be some conflict with the right-of-way agreements with Norfolk Southern, similar to the Seventeenth Street Bridge.
Thank you. I don't have any immediate questions with this one either, thank you for clarifying, I will open the floor to my colleagues, um, who may have some questions for you. I'll begin with Councilwoman Daniels, any questions?
The same question as with the prior bill, like, when do you anticipate the, the work to start?
This one is not as far along, uh, as the Seventeenth Street Bridge, I would imagine it would probably start, um, acquisitions would start later next year, and then construction following that.
That's it for me, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Davis, any questions?
Thank you. Yes. Does the McClay Street Bridge belong to the city or the state?
Yes. So, yes, it does, it belongs to both unfortunately, pieces of it are ours, pieces of it is theirs.
Oh. Okay. So, the portion, well, I guess the whole bridge is in play here to be repaired, okay. Thank you, no further questions.
Thank you. Vice President Green, any questions?
No, I don't have any questions, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Rawls, any questions?
No, I don't have any questions, but thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Rodriguez, any questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair, no questions for me.
Thank you. And Councilman Jones, any questions?
Not at the moment.
Okay, thank you. Uh, if there's no further discussion and no further questions, uh, I move to add Bill Five of 2024 to our next legislative session agenda for a vote. Our final, uh, discussion for the Administration Committee is Resolution 52 of 2024. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Yes. Resolution 52 of 2024. A resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional services contract with State Street Strategies LLC, LLC, D/B/A, OnePlus Strategies for Strategic Guidance and Intelligence Gathering for Lobbying Related Services.
Thank you. I believe there are representatives here? Thank you. If you could please take a moment to introduce yourselves and then, uh, share some information regarding your firm.
Sure, thank you very much, uh, for having us here today, my name is, uh, Jake Corman, I'm a former state senator here in Pennsylvania, was the, uh, Majority Leader for six years and the President Pro-Ten the last two years before I retired in 2022. Um, since then, we, we started this firm called OnePlus Strategies, uh, we're a little over fifteen, sixteen months old now, uh, have over a hundred and twenty clients, have about, uh, just under thirty professionals working at our firm, and, uh, our vision for this new firm that we created was to put a team together, uh, that was prepared to lobby on behalf of our clients, not necessarily an ideological issue. Uh, we put a team together, uh, Pennsylvania being a purple state, we figured to be effective, uh, we needed Republicans, we needed Democrats, we needed people from the city, we need people from rural areas, uh, so that we could effectively argue or articulate the message for our, whatever client that, uh, we may be serving at that time, and I think we put that type of team together, uh, and, uh, we're looking forward to representing the City of Harrisburg. As personally for me, uh, my time in legislature, even though I represented, uh, the center county, center part of the state, State College, I didn't represent a city per se, uh, something I was always very, uh, passionate about, uh, working on behalf of cities and boroughs because I've always been a big believer that, uh, they are the centerpiece of our communities, uh, and their vibrancy is essential, uh, for the community and, and not only for the city itself, but for the communities around it, and so, uh, we look forward for the opportunity to articulate and advocate, uh, on your behalf.
Good evening, honorable members of council, my name is Blake Lynch, uh, formerly, uh, worked at WITF as Senior Vice President and Chief Impact Officer of the organization, and prior to that, I served under two mayoral administrations here at the City of Harrisburg, under Mayor Eric Papafus, under Mayor Linda Thompson, uh, in a variety of roles. Uh, very passionate about the city, uh, having family that, uh, lives here in the city throughout, from, uh, all the way from projects to, um, out the south side of Rawson Street, I'm in the city multiple times every single week. Previously, I ran for Congress to represent the area, including the city, because of my passion, working alongside our bravest men and women every single day that are out in the streets, doing the work of the people is something that I have tremendous pride in, uh, especially with my father being a Harrisburg Cougar, uh, you know, always having that pride in representing the city and everything that it represents. Um, so, it is an honor to join the, uh, the firm, OnePlus Strategies, a bipartisan firm made up of Republicans, Democrats, and independents. Um, as, uh, Jake said, we are close to thirty, uh, professionals that work for the firm, um, and having a variety of clients stretching, uh, the Commonwealth and even federally as well. Um, I serve as a government relations professional, also known as, as a registered lobbyist, and do represent various clients as well on behalf of their interests to try to make sure we can help build that bridge, uh, between the needs that help represent the Commonwealth and also the interests of our clients. Happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Lynch, I do have maybe one question for you. Now, it's noted in this resolution that you will serve as the liaison for the City of Harrisburg, is that accurate?
That is correct, and then also, all twenty-five members of the team, of course, are a part of this effort to make sure that we're successful in what has been laid out to try to advocate for more fire protection line item funding, as well as more funding for Parks and Recreation, for bettering your relationship with Pendott, a host of other issues, um, that the mayor has proposed through the RFP process.
So, in your, uh, brief sixteen months, it may have seemed like an eternity for you guys, but how many of your hundred-plus clients are municipalities throughout the Commonwealth?
Sure. Uh, formerly, uh, formerly, prior to change in administration, the firm did represent the City of Philadelphia, um, and then with the change in administration, they decided to select another firm. At this time, we do not represent any other municipality or township or borough, but we are working on entities that are attached, such, we do have clients that are airport authorities and other municipal authorities, but not city or borough.
Okay. My other question relates to, why now? We know that the current legislative session is nearing an end, um, there are limited session days left, why now? Why not earlier in the year when you could have been impactful, uh, with the budget?
We did complete the RFP process over a year ago, um, and we were waiting for our time to be presented, uh, as a finalist, there were three finalists that were remaining, and we were one of those, and selected by the administration at the appointed time that they decided to complete the RFP process. Uh, so it's really a point of timing, if you note in your exhibit, even the engagement letter was written, um, almost two months ago and was provided, um, so, we are ready and prepared to serve with, uh, new sessions getting ready to begin here shortly, actually.
I don't have any other questions, I will open the floor to my colleagues who may have some additional questions. I'll begin with Councilman Jones, any questions?
Um, thank you, President Bowers. Uh, yeah, simply, uh, similar to President Bowers' question, um, I'm just looking at this and I would ask, first, I mean, this may be a question for, for Neil, um, how many other companies were looked at through this process?
I did know that I've forgotten, I think there were at least five that applied and three that were interviewed, um, but this started quite a while ago.
I'll kind of answer that, um, I was part of the RFP committee, it seems like a couple of years ago at this point, um, and there were five, and we, um, scored each of them and then heard nothing else up until now.
So, you, you saying you were a part of the, the team of selecting these companies, or?
Yes, I read over each RFP and I scored each RFP, and then I handed in my scoring rubric to the previous business administrator.
Okay, so you said five years ago, this is, was clearly before B, right?
It was, it started, it started when the City of Harrisburg found out, uh, that literally our taxing authority had been on the negotiation table with no one at the table, um, so, uh, which happens when you're not there, if something's gotta go, something can go that's you. Um, we have, uh, it is lobbying that brought us our taxing authority, it is lobbying that brought us our fire protection monies, uh, it, our fire protection monies are about five million dollars, they had been cut down to about four hundred and twenty-five thousand at one point. Um, so, so there were efforts to bring all that back and to deal with other agency things from the last administration and this administration. Um, but, so that's what started this process, was, we were, we were advised, the City of Harrisburg Taxing Authority was on the table for a discussion. Um, this past session, there was a bill to take our fire dollars, which is, and divide it up amongst all municipalities that had a state building in it, um, where, while, while we have most of them, that's a lot of parts of the state to divide up the money, so, it's really about a seat at the table at the end of the day.
So, uh, I understand the need for the firm, um, again, um, I echo the sentiments of President Bowers as why now, and if, um, Vice President Green, um, my other question would be, hopefully you can provide, and you or Neil can provide some clarity on this for me, if these, uh, were, was OnePlus Strategies part of those, that RFP process when you originally did it? If not, when did you got, was there a new RFP process and a rubric done on these, on these companies?
Yes, they were part of the RFP process, um, from my understanding, no, no other company other than the ones that were part of that RFP process were interviewed or spoken to about this. Um, why it took so long, I can't answer that, uh, and I guess my question would be for the other ones as well as for OnePlus, is, is it the same team? Because, uh, the RFP that we got, and then the team that we get could be completely different, so I know that was a concern that I discussed with the administration a year ago.
Anything, Neil, on that?
I cannot answer that, I don't know the answer to that question, we, our office doesn't get involved in the interview process, the, uh, interviews, I understand it was Councilwoman Green, I believe, a representative with Controller's Office, the Finance Office, and the Business Administrator, Finance Director's gone, the BA is gone, the, the Controller's Office does not participate in meetings like this over, you know, they seem themselves as assisting in something like this, so I, I have no information for you.
Okay, uh, so I'll move on, um, to my next question, um, explaining, because our residents can't see what we're looking at far as in the scope of work, so can you explain some of the duties and, um, expertise around those areas where, that are gonna be taking place for, what, five thousand dollars per month?
Absolutely. So, in the agreement, um, I believe is public record, you know, they'll come out after this meeting, it is for strategic guidance, it is for relationship building, it is to help advocate for increasing, maintaining and increasing the fire protection line item because forty-eight percent of the city is tax exempt, as we all know, um, and we believe that the city has not been receiving its fair share, and we believe that the city is entitled to much more, which benefits not just fire protection and EMS services, but really, uh, the, the services of roads and bridges and, uh, the impact that so many residents coming in and out of the, in and out of the city every single day represents, uh, so we'll be advocating for that. Um, having the relationships that we already maintain here in the city from working under two mayoral administrations, I, I have a knowledge and relationships that are pretty strong when it comes to public safety, when it comes to, uh, different, um, entities inside of the city, so it helps to articulate and advocate on behalf of the areas of the city without much of a learning curve, um, and really humbled for that, so when it comes to that, we have over twenty-five folks in the firm, a variety of relationships that are very strong, uh, including former leader of the, of the Senate right next to me, who maintains very, very strong relationships and was a part of helping to make that fire protection, uh, increase to five million dollars happen during his tenure. So, we have advocates that are for the city, uh, including our own elected representatives that will be there at the table with us.
One, one other thing, um, news monitoring, can you explain that? What is that?
Sure, that is policy updates, that is bills, legislation, as Neil had pointed out, um, it's really, again, understanding the bills that are coming, um, what negotiations are going on, conversations that are happening, and then providing them back to the administration so that they're updated on that. Would you like to add anything to? Yes. And we do that for all of our clients.
Okay. Um, for now, I don't have any further questions, thank you, President Bowers.
Thank you, Councilman Jones.
Thank you. Councilman Rodriguez, any questions?
Thank you, Madam President, uh, thank you, gentlemen, for joining us this evening. Um, I'm on the website, I see Andrew, a, a lot of familiar faces, um, and this may be a legal question, uh, are you aware of any current possible conflicts or potential coming up in the future, uh, being as though, um, you'll be lobbying for different pots of, you know, financials, um, and some of these may go to different groups, would that tie into each other at all essentially, or is there a great separation?
Uh, we're not aware of any, uh, conflicts, uh, obviously, we'd address those early on if, if we thought there were any, um, certainly advocating on behalf of the city is, is unique unto itself, and so we don't see any concerns there whatsoever.
Okay, thank you, no further questions.
Thank you. Councilwoman Rawls, any questions?
Thank you, President Bowers, I just have one, because most of mine have been asked and answered, I had saw under, um, it was number four for like, I think, uh, what your job will be, your scope of work, and one of them was the Pennsylvania Lobbying Disclosure compliance, so I think it's paperwork, and the paperwork that you send in, um, at the end of each year, which is a hundred and seventy-five dollars for each hourly, for each, um, set of paperwork that you send in, so I was just wondering, like, how much would that come to, like, how much would you be sending, and just to see, because I know yearly, it's gonna already be sixty thousand dollars for the five thousand a month, so what would the other costs look like?
That's actually gonna be included in the retainer services, uh, for the city that we'll be doing, and that is to file on the city's behalf lobbying disclosure that is reported quarterly, uh, we've already talked to Leo about that through Tiffany and saying.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
My pleasure.
That's it for me.
Okay, thank you. Vice President Green, any questions?
Thank you, I don't really have any questions for you, most of them have already been, um, discussed, uh, I guess one thing I have is, what's the biggest asset you feel like you bring to the City of Harrisburg?
Well, I think our relationships and, and, as I mentioned before, it's important that, you know, there's, the legislature's very close, both in the State House, where it's one oh-two, one oh-one, in the State Senate, where it's, uh, I believe, twenty-eight, twenty-two, you have a Democrat governor, Republican senate, and so, you know, when you're advocating on behalf of your client, you wanna go to all the doors, no matter who's in charge and no matter who's in control, and so we've developed, and we developed this firm, uh, to have a strategy of individuals who could go to whatever party, whatever individual, whatever region, to advocate, have a game behalf on our clients. Uh, Representative Paul Costa, who came into legislature with me in the late nineties, he was a Democrat from Pittsburgh, uh, Representative Stan Saylor, who's, uh, just retired, uh, two years ago as well, is a Republican, uh, Majority Appropriations Chairman in the House, uh, we have people who were formerly on the Shapiro administration on our staff, so, you know, we tried to develop relationships, no matter who's in charge, because that will change over time, and, you know, we're not gonna be an effective firm if we can't change with that and, and be able to do things, and so, and it's important, the city, that when you're going through different requests and different issues that you're trying to get, that you'd be able to get into every door, uh, and I think that's what we provided with the, the, um, diversity of our, of our firm.
Thank you, I don't have any further questions at the time.
Thank you. Councilwoman Davis, any questions?
Thank you, President Bowers, thank you for being here this evening, gentlemen, I don't have any questions, my questions have been answered, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Daniels, any questions?
Yeah, I just have a few, so it looks like the cap on the contract is sixty thousand, um, which is about the same as the cap we had with Maverick, so can you explain why we shifted from Maverick to this firm?
Because there was, that, that contract had expired, and this was an RFP process, that, that, that's all I can tell you, Maverick was not under contract during this administration, and, uh, when that expired, the mayor had put out for an RFP process for a lobbyist.
Okay. And, um, I guess the rest for me is just comments, right now, we don't have a BA, we don't have a financial, finance director, we don't have a communications director, we're basically completely understaffed, this is not a high priority for me, plus our experience with the last lobbying firm was pretty bad, we ended up just giving the Hudson Building to one of its principals, and I know you're saying that lobbyists were what got us the fire money and the taxing authority, but it was really Act Forty-seven, the threat of bankruptcy and, um, a receiver, so, you know, I don't want us to, um, overvalue what we get, plus, some of these tasks are things that our employees should do, right, like, our HR person should be current on what the current policy is, uh, you know, if there's a change in state law regarding employment or whatever, um, and we have our state representatives too, who, you know, do advocate for us, um, strongly, uh, up at the Capitol, so, I, I don't see this as a priority at all in terms of what the city needs right now.
I, I just feel obligated because I've been through the trenches, and I'm gonna say that I started out not being in favor of lobbyists, and the last mayor knew that, but the only reason we have permanent taxing authority is because of the strategy composed and put in place because of a lobbyist, it was an amendment to the fiscal code done on the very last day of a two-year term, on the very last vote, strategized into place to give us EIT on a permanent basis. EIT is twice the revenue of the LST, the LST steps down, um, we were the only ones to get that in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, um, so, I'm just saying, I, I, you, you can ask the prior people, because when I was in the room, I was not a fan of the idea, but I will tell you, it worked, and when I am wrong and something- And when I am wrong and something works, I'm willing to say out loud, I was wrong and it worked, and it worked. And we are just as vulnerable now as we were before. We have the largest threat to our taxing authority because of the loss of tax revenue from the high rise that are coming. We have the loss of the Commonwealth in our own office buildings. I mean, those are real threats. And I am not an advocate for one strategies. I'm an advocate for Harrisburg protecting itself up there on the hill because we depend on them for much more than people realize.
And if I may, Councilman, Councilwoman Daniels, just to echo that though, because again, if we look at certain situations that we've already been in, let's look at the Broad Street Market for an example, alright? So we had Representative Kim, Representative Mattson, stand in front of that building and say that they were gonna get money for that place. They were involved in this last process with the market. So again, just not, I don't wanna say throwing money out the window because I do believe that there is a need for lobbying just in certain areas. That's just my sentiments, just sharing in with Councilwoman Daniels said. And I just wanted to add that because what you just said, Neil, I do believe we do need some lobbying in some areas. However, again, I wouldn't rate this point at a, at a high priority.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not saying what your priorities are. I am just saying that is a reality when you, when you don't have someone up on the table in the room. You are vulnerable and we have been vulnerable. We have always had a state representative up there. That's every single time. It didn't stop us from getting hit very hard multiple times. And so, again, I'm not advocating for any one entity. I'm just saying my job is to protect taxpayer to Harrisburg and in the past, it made a difference.
Thank you. Well, let me respond for first. Thank you, Councilwoman Daniels, and thank you, Councilman Jones, for your commentary. I wholeheartedly agree. Thank you, Solicitor Grover, for your input. Councilwoman Ross, you have another question?
I did, real quick, because I know when we were up here speaking and I know Vice President Green had mentioned she was a part of the RFP process when these lobbyists came in front of us in the different companies. So can you clarify for me? I don't know if you can, Neil. I don't think you all can because you weren't part of the administration. But how long has it been since we've had a lobbyist in that position?
That contract expired either December of twenty twenty one or January twenty twenty two.
So we've had that whole time with no lobbyists? And now it's, I guess I get confused because why is it so important now, but it wasn't in twenty twenty one? And maybe that's not directed to you because you're not in the administration. I don't know who could answer that, but I would wanna know what is the push now when we haven't had one since twenty twenty one? And now it feels like, okay, we have to, you know, get this done now. And, you know, you're thinking about the money, that's sixty thousand dollars. And then we, the RFP process was done so long ago, we don't even know if it's the same people at the companies or why they graded them the way they did. So it's, it just feels like now it's just, here, get one. But it's not for the right reason, so nothing against you all, but I'm just trying to understand it.
The only answer I have for you is that there are those of us who speak on a regular basis, trying to prod things along sometimes. You know, Mr. Hartman, myself, Ms. Kelly, I think all tried to prod along that this is a priority amongst many priorities. And, you know, a lot of things take a long time to come forward. The priority level hasn't changed, it's just there's competing priorities. And we try to keep those priorities on the radar, you know, against everything else. You know, there, there is discussions with the state leaving two of our largest buildings in the city. That is the kind of thing you need someone in the room for the discussion to stop, slow down or whatever. It's not us alone in those buildings.
Can I just add something on, sort of on the timing issue, maybe help clarify? So we've answered the RFP, obviously, and we came in and met with administrative staff, probably March, April in that area. And then came back for an extra round of interviews, I think when they nailed it down to three people or three firms. And that was, I believe, in June. And then when we were selected, they said we wouldn't start until the fall. And a lot of that, I understand the concern about, well, we just had.
What year was that?
This is all this year. This is all this year. I'm sorry. So what we, enables us to do if we're able to complete this contract here in the, in the fall, as now we've gone past Labor Day, we're now officially in the, we're not officially in the fall, but it feels like it, is that it allows us to hit the ground running. On November thirtieth, the legislative session ends and every bill and every piece of legislation dies. And then on, starting December first, members of the General Assembly will start introducing new legislation. This allow us time to, to meet with the mayor and administration and whoever else would like to have meetings with us to talk about strategy and, and things that we're going to, to be asked to try to accomplish for you or defend for you, as was mentioned. And, you know, that really starts December first. That's when legislation will start being introduced. And so, in a lot of ways, the timing does make sense because it will be here and be ready into ground running when the new session starts.
So this is just from my edification. Can someone clarify the timeline? Because it sounds like the original RFP was in twenty twenty one, but then you were saying that you responded in March, your interviews were in March, so can, can someone?
Sure.
Well, no, no, for the city's timeline, like.
Yeah, I believe there, there were three steps, right? There was an original resolution in twenty twenty two, try to get a lobbyist on board because our taxing authority was on the discussion block. It was then authorized to come back to City Council and an RFP was started in twenty twenty three. That did not lead to a ultimate award of a lobbying contract. And what I understand is there was a determination to re-interview the applicants from the prior submission in twenty twenty three, which took place in twenty twenty four.
These are the ones that you were a part of, Vice President Green?
This is all the same process. It just kind of has been drug out. I believe it was January of twenty three that I turned in my scoring rubric.
So you get the.
So you turn in the scoring rubric after the interviews or before the interviews?
January of twenty three and then I think the interviews were in twenty four. So a year later is when the interviews were.
What was the twenty one date you gave, Neil?
When the last contract expired, either the end of twenty one or beginning of twenty twenty.
Oh, okay, because when I said how long, okay, so the rubrics were turning in twenty.
January, I believe, of twenty three.
You all gotta call this.
We, the, the firm and I believe the three people or five people that interviewed originally, there was a first round of interviews. Then it was then determined then three finalists. We then interviewed in June of this year. And I was actually, myself, Jake and two other members of the team, interviewed with the administration and the representative's administration alongside two other firms that were finalists as well. We all came in on the same day. And then from there, we, it was then, this is twenty four, June of twenty twenty four, yes. That was the finalist round with two other firms on the same day. We actually saw, saw each other coming in out of City Hall. And then from there, it was then determined after the final round of interviews, based on those who were in the room, the recommendation for our firm.
And I will note that City Council asked several times throughout this process. I know President Bowers, I know councilmen, majors asked several times what's going on with the lobbying contract. You know, how, we haven't heard anything, we haven't gotten any updates. So I know, like, for council, it was a priority. We kept trying to push it and get it done because we felt like we did want that representation. So it wasn't like, it wasn't like we weren't inquiring about it. It wasn't like City Council didn't feel like it was a priority. And then we were just waiting for the, the process to finish up from the administration and for us to get somebody down in front of us.
Yeah, and, and for me, it's, it's more so, we, we have, again, we have state representatives that are, are doing some of this work, you know, to, to make sure that we get what we need here. I mean, they step in when they feel the need to, so. Yeah, and I, I'm just, I'm just curious to see who else was at the table. Is there any way that I can see that, like those, the other RFPs?
I will coordinate with the mayor's office to look at council information.
Alright, yeah, because I'm behind. You gotta understand.
It started before you were here, there's no question.
Thank you. So yes, it, it was a priority, we did inquire, but per usual, the lack of communication, as you can see, it was crickets until now. I just wanted to note, just for everybody's reference, Resolution ninety four of twenty twenty authorized the two thousand and twenty one professional services agreement with Maverick. And that was from January first of two thousand and twenty one through December thirty first of two thousand and twenty one. Ninety four of two thousand and twenty.
Twenty.
Mm-hmm, and that was for the two thousand and twenty one year.
Can I ask another question? When was the intent for, of the award of this come out? When did that come out?
When did we receive our letter? Is that what you're asking?
Intent to award you, yes.
Sure, that was in June of twenty twenty four.
Same time you were having the.
After the second interview.
Okay.
A few weeks later, we then received a letter from the administration announcing the intention to move forward with our firm. And shortly thereafter, we then provided an engagement letter, which is provided in the attached.
That was July first of two thousand and twenty four. The engagement letter was sent. Are there any other questions, council members?
No, just for me, again, I just would like to get caught up on how all of this played out before I even make a decision. That's just where I am on this.
That's what I was, it's very hard for me to vote on this because I don't know what the original process was. There's paperwork I don't have, so it's hard for me to just say yes from just reading the resolution because it took so long to get to us.
I hear you. And given the line of questioning that you gentlemen have received this evening, I would like to table Resolution fifty two of two thousand and twenty four. It will remain in the Administration Committee. So this concludes the work of the Administration Committee. Thank you for joining us. The next committee business, we will move to the Budget and Finance Committee. I will defer to our Budget and Finance Committee Chair, Vice President Green.
Thank you, President Bowers. For the Budget and Finance Committee, tonight we are going to discuss Resolution forty six of twenty twenty four. Resolution forty six is a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to participate in the Dolphin County Bridge Bundling Program to replace the bridge known as HBG dash one nine and negotiate and enter into an intermunicipal cost-sharing agreement and furtherance of such. And who do we have from the city?
Good evening, Joel Seider, City Engineer.
Good evening. If you could just give us a quick synopsis of this, we'd appreciate it.
So this project is for the replacement of the Walnut Street Bridge over Jones Town Road. It's in disrepair, sorely needs. Either rehabilitation or replacement and the longer we let it go, the worse, worse it's becoming. This bridge bundling program is a great opportunity for the city to have the bridge replaced. I believe it's, the city would be responsible for two percent of the overall design and construction fee. So it's just an absolutely fantastic opportunity for the city.
Thank you. And then just looking over this resolution, it looks like the city will be responsible for about thirty four thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars in the cost-sharing agreement.
That's correct. If the, the total amount of construction, which may fluctuate with inflation.
Right.
As long as it comes into around one point seven million.
Excuse me, can you speak into the microphone or move it closer to you? I apologize, didn't mean to interrupt.
No, I'm sorry. So yes, it would be about thirty five thousand if the total is one, one point seven four nine million. Regardless of the, the, the total end cost, it will be only two percent of the, the final cost.
All right, thank you. And then just looking at this, the estimated construction is looking at about January through August of twenty twenty six? Estimated, of course.
Estimated, that would be a, a very rough estimate. I, I would probably push it back even, even a little further just because this, this agreement was originally brought forward at the beginning of this year and it's just been delayed until now. So it's gonna push design and construction back just as much as it's been delayed. So I'd say even.
So twenty six, twenty seven, not this year, not next year? Okay. I don't have any questions. It looks like a, a great opportunity for the city to be able to get some work done without having to pay too much and get some much-needed repairs to the bridge. I'm gonna open it up to my colleagues, starting down to the far left with Councilman Jones. Any questions or comments?
Thank you, Vice President Green. I'm having a hard time locating this bridge. Where are we? It's, it's, because Jonestown Road, Walnut Street, I mean, State Street goes into Jonestown Road. Then you have Walnut on here. I'm, I'm lost.
It's just a little one-way street.
Coming off State Street Bridge?
I think so. It's, it's hard to describe as well.
Would that be the Walnut Street Bridge? Would that be up by like that Dunkin' Donuts up there? That's Jonestown Road. Right, but there's a little bridge there, right there for the highway.
Yeah, I'm kinda lost of where that is. But my other question would be, what, you know, I don't know if, if the city applied for any grants for things like this. There's a lot of infrastructure money out there and are you aware if we apply for any of that?
I, I do not know. I just, the, the bridge bundling project is through the county and they oversee it. I don't know how they, I don't know if we participate. And I just know that they're the ones who sort of carry the ball on this. They get the engineers, they get the designers. And for something we own, having everyone else pick up the cost pretty much is usually easy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just, I, again, I just would love to know where this bridge is. I know we need, I mean, a lot of bridges need to be repaired in the city of Harrisburg, but I would really like to know where that is if someone could help me find where that is.
Is that, is that something I could follow up with you on?
Yeah, sure, sure, sure. Not a deciding factor or anything, I'm just trying to like, where is this bridge located at?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's hard to describe as well as imagine.
No further presence, President Green, Vice President Green.
Thank you. Councilman Rodriguez, any questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair. That was pretty much the same. I, I can't get a pinpoint on where that bridge is. And I was just questioning, would that be city limits or, I was, that's, that was one of my questions as well.
It is within the city.
It definitely is. Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Ross.
Hello. No, my question too is just trying to figure out where it is. I'm trying to think of a bridge that I can even think, I, I see hills and things, but I don't, I don't see any bridges there. So I'm trying to picture it, but, I mean, no fault of yours, but just trying to figure out where they're doing work at. So people too, if anyone can't picture it and is like, oh, okay, I know where that bridge is, you know, so. But yeah, if you could let us know. Thank you.
President Bowers?
I don't think I have any questions, just clarifying. So the cost-sharing split is sixty percent will be covered by the county and forty percent will be covered by the city. Is that correct?
Except that eighty percent is covered by the federal government, twenty or fifteen by the state, three percent by the county and two. So that is a sixty, forty, but a five percent of the contract cost.
Okay, I got it. Just wanted to clarify. And then my other question was asked and answered regarding the, the timeline. So thank you.
Councilwoman Davis?
Thank you, Vice President Green. I am trying to think about where this bridge could be also. I don't know, maybe at the top of Hur Street, going around to Walnut because you mentioned the city limits. I don't know that that's even a bridge, that's a street. Okay, so.
It sounds like a city council field trip to me.
Yeah, because when you get to twentieth street, that's no longer in the city. You get this, you cross twentieth, it turns into Pembroke. So I'm, I'm really, yeah, I'm trying to find where it is.
Google Maps is taking me up State Street, like by where State turns to Walnut right there. Like that, that intersection right there, near Rivington Terrace.
I'm lost, but.
By the Civil War Museum up in that, that's where Google's taking me, but we gotta, I think we just have to walk.
Uh, no other questions for me.
Thank you, Councilwoman Daniels. Thank you. Uh, seeing no further questions, uh, we look forward to finding out exactly where the bridge is, just for our curiosity.
I do have a location for you. So it's uh coming off State Street, it's Royal Terrace, but it turns into it turns into Walnut.
Now I know where it is. I was like, that's the only.
Just say Royal Terrace.
That could, that I could see coming off, and yes, that bridge needs work, yes.
Okay, I was just thinking that was the whole bridge. Like, I didn't put it in pieces, but yeah, because Royal Terrace is right there, all right.
But it's nowhere near Jonestown Road, so that threw me, that's where.
Jonestown Road is nowhere near that.
In this location, Jonestown Road also turns into King Street.
Oh, man.
So it'd be Royal Terrace and then.
Queen is bicolonial park, okay.
And then you go under the bridge and it.
Yeah, once you said Royal Terrace, you were good. That is the one, yeah.
So it's like the intersection of four streets right up that way.
Now got it. Okay, thank.
All right, well, I'm glad we figured that out. Uh, without any further questions, I will recommend this on our, to our next legislative agenda. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we're going to discuss Resolution fifty-three of two thousand and twenty-four, which is a resolution approving the fifth proposed two thousand and twenty-four budget reallocation, confirming and otherwise clarifying the intended designation of revenue replacement funds under the American Rescue Plan Act as being attributed to public safety purposes under the general fund, and further confirming the award of certain available funds, excuse me, certain available general fund program dollars to two to local organizations to provide services for bridge housing. I will let you gentlemen take it away once you get settled.
Thank you for the paper copies.
They're color-coded as well.
I had the same thing.
Thank you, Mr.
Good evening, Council. Timothy Burke, the Budget Manager, and before you is the fifth proposed budget um budget reallocation for two thousand and twenty-four. So uh what we did here on this budget reallocation was to make it a little bit easier to understand because there's a lot of movement part, moving parts. Um, the top half is gonna be uh, and when I say the top half, everything in footnote A are gonna be the ask that we were requesting. For footnote A under uh Bureau of Fire and uh, excuse me, sure, under Bureau of File. Ultimately, we had overages in their overtime line and their severance lines related to overtime, excess overtime, and then retirements that happened during the course of the year. Uh, with these retirements that happened during the course of the year, we had to, you know, figure out how we were going to help the overtime line and the impacted uh in the impacted um retirement lines from, you know, overtime and the impacted retirement lines. Therefore, what we were able to do was utilize some of the unspent money for the retirements that were that did happen. Um, the the people that were retiring were high-level um six-figure people. We were able to utilize some of their salary and wages that they would have been um appropriated for this year's pay, the remaining pays, to be able to offset the uh of the overtime and impacted uh retirement lines. Can you hear me well?
Yeah.
Okay.
I was waiting for the question.
Okay. Um, ultimately, those are um, those are the maneuvers that we were trying to do to help uh find the the available funds to to help the overtime and retirement lines. Um, it's still new, it's still left us with the request of about eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars, so they would have overtime for the remainder of the year, and they don't foresee any um retirements throughout the rest of the year, so. Um, their ask essentially is the eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars there at the the bottom line. Um, the other, the other things within uh footnote A is the is the medical. Um, medical, like it was last year, has been coming in very, very high. Um, and Mr. McCutcheon here can really kind of go into more detail about that, but um, on a bi-weekly basis, we're coming in almost sometimes double um what we're what we've anticipated through the first half of the year or um through the year period, so um, we're looking to uh add some, add some funding to the medical lines that we're able to sustain through the remainder of the year. And then the last thing is um, we have pending legal settlements. Um, and we would like to create a reserve, or not even necessarily have a reserve, but have the money there to be able to pay for those legal settlements as they happen through the remainder of the year. And what we did, so that total ask is the three point four million um here in a cursor, um, which includes the eight hundred and sixty thousand plus the two point six for the uh medical and uh liability settlement claims, which comes to the three point four. What we were able to do, so we didn't have to impact the fund balance, was we were able to utilize unspent and available um salary and wages uh money from other departments, as well as uh revenue that exceeded what we projected this year. To be able to utilize that, those funds to pay for the uh the ask that we have here in the amount of three point four million. So that's what you'll see down in B and C, um as well as D here. Um, and what you'll see down in D, in the underneath the Capital Projects Fund, is a um a movement of money for nine hundred thousand. I'm pretty sure you guys are under uh under the the understanding that the State Street project was not, you know, we it got canceled, therefore we had that amount of money to be able to put towards um helping this reallocation um for the medical fire and liability claims.
And I think it got postponed, not canceled, right?
Yes, I'll I'll yield to your terms then. But that in effect uh explains what we're looking at in Exhibit A, and how we were able to craft things to uh make it work without touching the fund balance. Uh, now for questions?
Any questions? I'm going to start to my far right here, because it's not that far, but with Councilwoman Daniels, do you have any questions regarding this schedule?
This, I mean, this is probably more for the administration, but it looks like some of these wages are because people are currently not in those roles. Are we not expecting to fill them by the end of this year? Or like, what, how many months of the, so it's not a question for you, like, how many months of those, maybe Brian knows it more precisely, how many months of like the business administrators? Are we assuming we're not spending or? Okay, I don't know.
That that makes perfect sense, and I think Brian has a good answer for you.
Okay, all right, yes, uh, yeah, yeah, thank you, Councilwoman Daniels. Good evening, everyone. Brian McCutcheon, Accounting Manager in the Bureau of Financial Management. Um, yeah, the salaries and wages, we always look at that uh throughout the year, and in this case, it was it was pressed upon to to try to remedy this need mainly for Fire Bureau and and the medical. The um, the business administrator line, it's the second line down, that's a perfect example, where you take the uh for the previous business administrator administrator, his salary for the year through uh the second payroll in August is, you you just allocate that out, and then you you uh put that up against what we've actually spent expended to that point, uh August fifteenth. So there is a, there's a savings just because of his departure, uh similar to our our bureau with with the departure of the previous finance director. But uh, those amounts are relatively small. Um, if you look at the other lines, they are a bit bigger, and that that lends itself more to uh unfilled positions uh throughout the year in those particular departments. In in the Law Bureau, for example, there's there's not a full staff uh that that's been in effect for the the larger portion of this year. So that's why you see a a larger amount of available budget unspent through August fifteenth, forty-two thousand. So that's a safe thing, it's a safe harbor in in the sense of taking that budget and purely reallocating it to the lines that are at the top half of the schedule.
Thank you, and then this is just for my edification. So we're making this transfer because we need to pay into those things, but I also assume there's some liability that comes if we don't pay those things in a timely manner, but do you know what that liability is?
Are you?
Or potential.
Are you referring to the?
Salaries over time.
The 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 liability settlement claims?
Yeah, all of those.
That you, that's a best estimate. We we never know, you're right, timing and uh and the amount, whenever they occur on on that, and we we get notified from our uh third-party administrator about when claims have been finalized or settled, and and what the need, the timing need to get that uh those funds dispersed. So we, the original appropriation for the year was five hundred K, and it's so far this year, you know, and I I knock on wood because it's only seventy-five thousand that we've actually expended, but that's you can't, it's not like another expense, you can't allocate it evenly throughout the year, you just never know, so we're just we're we're in a mindset of preparedness to try to increase that line in the event that something uh unexpected might happen prior to uh year end.
That's it for me, thank you.
All right, you're welcome.
Thank you, and Councilwoman Davis?
Thank you, President. Vice President Green. Um, thank you, Mr. for being here this evening. Um, you mentioned the original appropriation was five hundred thousand, is that for the medical fire for this?
That that's that's its uh its own unique line, uh for specifically for uh liability claims that happen to finalize and settle. And then there's an associated payout that goes along with that.
Okay, thank you. No, no other questions, thank you.
Thank you. President Bowers, any questions?
I don't have any questions, thank you.
Thank you, and Councilwoman Ross, any questions?
Thank you, Vice President Green. My quest, my questions have been asked and answered, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. No uh questions currently, but if I, if anything comes up, I'll email them over to you.
All right, thank you very much, and Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Vice President Green. Yeah, so um, my questions were asked and answered, but just to clarify, not just the line item of the liability settlement, um, that is, you said that's already been taken care of, I think I know where that's going.
So that that is our annualized settlement fund for a variety of claims, and there is one that we anticipate settling. We've found what's called an interpleter for, in the quarter of common pleas, which will eat up most of that. Um, that's why it needs to be refunded with additional funds.
Okay, and um, do we anticipate, I mean, to raise this this number, which you said to, and I think that's also coupled with the medical expenses. Um, can you explain that line to me a little better? Where is uh, is that current employees um taking, going to medical or someone, can you explain that?
Okay, um, it it it's a combination of of current employees and also retirees that are that are covered under the city's um medical, other post-employment benefits uh uh fund or or initiative. The the claims tend to be, I mean, there's three main claims, claims that happen during the year. There's the the medical, which is capital blue, uh the prescriptions through Medicare, and then there's dental claims. So what what we've seen, what we've seen actually uh last year, and also it's it's continuing into two thousand and twenty-four, especially during the first six months. Uh, capital blue in particular, we've had claims, the city pays those claims uh weekly, and it more times than not, unfortunately, during the first six months, there's been instances where during any one of those months, the claims for the week are double what we're what we're normally used to seeing. Now, on the, I'll I'll say it on the optimistic side, July, I noted there was a a little bit of a slowing, but August is coming back down uh in particular to where we would like, where I where I would like our claims to be somewhere in the uh one million dollars per month or less overall. That's not just, that's not just medical, that's that's everything. So that's uh, again, that's that's similar to our litigation claims or liability claims, you just never know what's coming until we look at it and see it on a Treasuries report. So um, we're trying to increase the budget, uh not saying that it's gonna drop off and and go back to what we would like to see, but did you, again, just to be more prepared, more mindful to increase that line uh prior to the end of the year, so hopefully we can cover, hopefully this will be the only request we we come to you, you know, to increase this line for medical.
Well, yeah, medical and and the liability, correct?
Yeah, I'm more confident about the liability settlement uh about, or more comfortable, I should say, you know, compared to medical. Medical, and finally, it's like coming up under, coming up finally to breathe underwater. There's been a just a long series, you know, six months of this year has been very, very heavy. So it's nice to see this little bit of a, a little bit of a reversing of the trend, you know, going into the second half of this year. Actually, well, actually, this is through August, so we're actually two-thirds of the way. But again, August has been the most positive month.
Okay, so we, I mean, again, I I hear you using the word like anticipate, of course, we don't want anything to come down and get sued about anything, but so this is more of as a a safety precaution, so to speak?
It's it's.
Or do, I mean.
It's one of the, if not the most, it's one of the most difficult lines to budget for during the year in recent times. So uh, we don't, we're hoping we're being uh, you know, strong-minded or aggressive enough to request this amount, and that it it rides out in good shape for the rest of the year, so we don't have to come back and and request an additional amount.
And last question, um, was having a little thought behind this too, uh with the Bureau of Fire, um, being in that overtime, I think it's over, yeah, it's pretty high, right, but now is, I'm gonna ask, is there a way that some of that money comes back?
That uh, yes, uh, and and in fact, Chief Enterline did a review with uh both Tim, and and he briefly discussed with me. Uh, he feels very uh comfortable about uh overtime after July, the last five months of the year, his need uh is for four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Um, there is an offset in this schedule to that for the Fire Bureau's deployment for for certain emergency uh events, uh disaster-type events, and if you look down in the revenue section, which is down in the, the best place is the the Green Seas. All right.
EIT?
There's a revenue, there's a revenue line there that says FEMA, uh USAR contract, that's urban search and rescue. And I I I talked specifically to the chief about this. So we we've already exceeded what the city has originally appropriated for the year, and he has additional funds coming, so we're increasing that line um to help offset that, to to fund these increases up above an expense, yeah.
Uh, Mr. Brian, real quick, um, just to piggyback off of Councilman Jones, is there any way we could kind of bring the other municipalities to the table that we assist with, because our like river rescue, we're going in different boroughs, different municipalities, is there any way that they can assist and take some of the burden off the city?
Are are you referring to like the three boroughs, that the city provides?
Our fire, our fire is pretty extensive, our fire team, when we talk about river rescue and other services, is there any way that we can compensate some of, you know, fiduciary um that we do lose uh with other maybe intergovernmental agreements, or have them kind of jump on board, um, because I know Enterline and the team, they do, they're dispatched to quite a lot of places.
We operate under mutual aid agreements that are longstanding, and so the terms are even back and forth across the board, but I guarantee one will show up for the other.
Is there a certain like ceiling?
It's not really a threshold, because most of them are volunteer departments.
Got you, okay, thank you.
And no further questions.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I'm going to recommend that uh Resolution fifty-three of two thousand and twenty-four be moved to our next legislative agenda.
Excuse me, Councilwoman, uh, we actually have one more exhibit.
Excuse me, Councilwoman, we actually have one more exhibit.
Well, thank you.
I apologize. I'd like to give the questions and then we can move along. I think that's kind of how we've done it before. Moving right along to Exhibit B. And let me bring this to you. Much of this, part of the reallocation is largely appropriated towards the Broad Street Market restoration projects, making sure that we have the funds accessible to do the things that we need to do as things come along within the Broad Street Market project. The other, and I'll say with footnote B alludes to, is also support funding for the Dome Relocation Project that we've already put some money towards, but we need to put the additional money that was in our estimated cash carryover to be able to finish that project, the Dome Relocation due from the I-81, I-83 expansion project that's happening up and down at eighty-three through the City of Harrisburg. Those are the large, those are the big pieces of it. Everything else you see, host municipality fees, they're going to donate a portion of the money for the Broad Street Market. And everything else is more or less the accounting happening within moving the money for Broad Street Market and the Dome Relocation Project.
Thank you. I'm going to keep to the same order and start to my far right with Councilwoman Daniels. Any questions?
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Davis, any questions?
No questions. Thank you.
And President Bowers, any questions?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Councilwoman Rawls, any questions?
Yes, I just had one question. I had thought with the Broad Street Market, we were awarded money and then also insurance money. So I was wondering how much more do we, I mean, we don't know how much more we'll need, but I'm just, I guess, confused that. I guess we don't have enough or how much are we leaving to the side for it?
So...
Just trying to be, just clarification, so I know where we're at, because I feel like we're in the dark a lot when it comes to it.
And Mr. Baker, I think, is in the back as well. But some of this comes out of our recommendation that we can't sign contracts without funds on hand, and some of the money won't come in until we're further along for insurance. So it was where is there funds available in the city dollars to make sure we can execute contracts as we go? And we are, one of the things in front of you tonight is a contract, what's called a forensic auditor, who's going to be our conduit to Liberty Mutual Insurance to make sure we maximize our recovery. So once that's flowing, it'll be a monthly report that goes to them as we're in the construction process with them and the construction manager. But to assure that we can let the contracts in the first place, we have to have funding on hand to do it.
And the money we got from the state wasn't enough?
The money we got from the state, I thought, the press conference, I thought, was for the stone building. Am I wrong?
Well, yeah, that's what I'm talking about. Yeah, Broad Street Market, the stone...
Stone building, the brick building is the one that's on fire.
No, I thought we got it for the...
I thought it was for the brick building.
It was for the brick building.
I thought it was for the brick building and some can be used for the stone building as well.
Yeah, it was for the brick building.
Three hundred and fifty thousand, or maybe I missed another one.
You could have. I feel like I've missed a lot with it.
So when I speak with the carrier, I tell them that the minimum cost to this project's twenty million dollars.
Okay.
That's the minimum cost that we should anticipate and likely more before we're done. So that's the, that's the reality that the city's dealing with in terms of this project. And there's a lot to be done.
And how much have we gotten from insurance so far?
Five, so far.
Five million.
But there's plenty of coverage. There's just certain items that are not covered under the policy, including professional services have a twenty-five thousand dollar cap. The front-end costs are professional services, engineers, architects, all those things. But that's the policy. But we've, it's a hundred-page-long policy, the insurance policy, and we are trying to make sure it's got different buckets, that we get everything under the right bucket to maximize our coverage.
Which is why the Resolution fifty-one came up.
Yes.
Thank you. That was it for me.
Thank you. And Councilman Rodriguez, any questions?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. It does seem like often there's a lot of funds thrown at this project, and it's kind of hard to sort it all and keep track of it all. So I do understand what counsel is saying, and I agree wholeheartedly. I guess, can you come back to me, Madam Chair? I'm reading something currently. Thank you.
I definitely can. Councilman Jones, any questions?
Yes. So to get an understanding of what you just said, we need money to be in there to, you know, honor contracts.
Issue the contract.
To issue them.
And, you know, so we have to have the money on hand for it.
Didn't we contract someone to handle those for us recently?
What's that?
Didn't we just contract someone to handle that?
But it's still our money. When we issue a contract for construction, we're architects next, then it's construction. You can't, we can't issue a contract without an appropriation in hand to go do it, right? Even if, so we're waiting on insurance money for the next phase, you know, if we don't have the contract, we literally can't issue if we don't have the money set aside.
And that brings me to my next question. So once we utilize this money in that capacity, when the insurance money comes in, is that reimbursed? Is that money?
I will leave the bookkeeping to finance, but I think you'll see it in the budget for 2025.
Okay.
How that comes about. Right now, we're trying to get to the contracting and be not stall in issuing contracts.
Okay. And my next question would be the one point three would have been the money for OnePlus Strategies, is that correct, that we're looking at here, the transfer out money? In the green, B.
Sorry for the confusion on that. The green actually is just neighborhood services as far as getting the PennDOT right-of-way money that's been received. That's non-related to Broad Street Market. It's just in here showing that to request this move, to have the general fund disperse that money over to Neighborhood Services, because that's where the Public Works Director wishes to utilize it. That's not Broad Street Market, but it's just part of this schedule. The blues, the A, the blue As on this are all Broad Street Market.
Okay.
So the one point three is not relevant to Broad Street.
Well, that's, I wasn't asking about it for Broad Street. I was saying for like the consult, because that was the same number pretty much for OnePlus, I want to say.
Theirs was sixty thousand.
I'm sorry, yeah, I'm getting this mixed up. I apologize. You're right. I got numbers floating around in my head. The numbers floating around my head. But thank you.
I know the feeling.
All right. Thank you. Any further questions, Councilman Rodriguez?
No, it was answered. Thank you.
All right. I do have one question about the one million for the bridge housing. It shows that, and that's not in this schedule, it's in the resolution itself.
Right.
It's showing a million dollars for bridge housing, which was awarded to Christian Churches United and Downtown Daily Bread, and the amount's a five hundred thousand.
Right. So what this is, is the law bureau's recommendation, the council already appropriated the million dollars. The mayor then was awarding it to two entities to provide bridge housing as the services. Since they weren't named in the budget you voted on, we had to find a way to bring it in front of council to make it happen. So we included them in this next budget appropriation, so it's a public discussion that though are the two entities that are getting contracts up to five hundred thousand dollars to complete bridge housing programs in the city. So there's a contract that will go to each of them. It is my understanding is that October one is a critical date for both of them to be able to implement. One of them has additional funding from another source, but that's as much as I know.
All right. And will the contracts then come back before us or?
They will not. They'll be available, but in order to get it up and running by October one, that's why this was now.
Okay. And do we have any information about like, how, like, the programs themselves about the actual bridge housing? Can we get any information on like, I mean, they were awarded the money, but I suppose they had ideas to how they were going to spend it or what program was going to be brought to the city?
Sure. I believe we could get a presentation from DBHD, because they're the ones who did the legwork to get this here. I know Ms. Roberts wasn't available tonight, Ms. Martin Roberts, but I think her office could arrange for a presentation.
Yes, if they could provide a presentation before our vote at the next legislative session, I think that would be very helpful since bridge housing, I believe, was a brainchild of city council. I believe President Bowers was the one who wanted to make sure that got in there. So we're just interested as to what the program was developed into, which is one of the reasons why we listed the programs out the way we did, so that we could make sure we're informed and that the public's informed as the programs actually develop, so.
I will speak with the mayor's office and Ms. Roberts, and we will make sure that the presentation comes down.
All right. Thank you. Any further questions or comments from our colleagues?
I had thought when we did with the ARPA money, because this is where the bridge, they're getting that bridge housing, I thought applications were supposed to come down in front of us to see how they would be awarding that money. That was one of the stipulations.
It's not that applications, it's that somehow it has to come back in front of you. And that's, this is how, the award determinations were made already, so this is how we was getting it back in front of city council.
I'm almost certain that was part of the stipulation, just so we just weren't awarding money, but that there was a process fall, so it was fair to the community, so.
Sure. I was just, bridge housing's a very narrow, narrow thing. That is our understanding. If the city's not been in the business of bridge housing to do it itself, so it was finding people to do that. I can't tell you how DBHD went about that, but I think the idea when we had the discussion was there would be, the city would become a pass-through essentially to people providing services when those budget allocations were being made, because we don't do that internally.
Right, but the administration, I thought, was supposed to create like an application process and then share it with us, letting us know like how they were going to pick companies for the ARPA money, whether it be for the bridge housing or whatnot, just to make sure that we were being, the public understood the process, that we were being fair, transparent. It feels like that just went to the side, and here we just picked these two entities. So it's just confusing on how to say, yes, this was fair, not to say it wasn't, but just how it came about when that kind of process was taken away. And I know that was a big thing when we were doing the ARPA money, like how things were going to be awarded, what the application process looked like. And once we approved that bill, it went back to the administration, and they were supposed to complete applications or what that looked like, whatever we're going to say with that process it was going to look like, and then let us know, just so we were all transparent, so.
Right, and that was a discussion we had with the previous director, Director Hill, who unfortunately is no longer with the city. So it seems like that wasn't exactly followed through with, you know, with the transition. I will say there were supposed to be regular meetings set up discussing the different ARPA projects that invited the chair of the respective departments. So in this instance, it would have been Councilwoman Davis that should have been invited for Parks and Recs, it should have been you. If it was something discussing public safety, it was supposed to be Councilman Jones or whoever the respective chair was. I don't think that that's, I know initial meetings were set up with Director Hill. I don't think that any other meetings were set up or followed through with. So that is something from the administrative side that was supposed to be happening, and it kind of seems like they, they went with the position, with the person, not the position.
Right. So I don't know where the ball dropped there. I mean, I can't say to fault of the current director of building housing, because if they weren't given the information, they're not going to know. But, yeah.
Right, and that's something that we can, we can request. We can reach out, Mr. Parker, if you could reach out to the directors that are left of the different departments and ask them about meetings for the ARPA programs that were allocated. Because I know, you know, things are still going on, they have their daily jobs that they're steady working on. So I can see how that could be something that will fall through the cracks. But if you could just reach out and ask them if we can get updates on the different ARPA projects and if there are meetings going on, if the respective chairs can be invited to them.
Certainly.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
There is one other thing, which goes to your discussion about ARPA. The other thing that's in this piece of legislation is an accounting audit feature. The ARPA monies had categories, eight of them, which could be awarded. The council then, when we did the amended budget last summer, turned it all into revenue replacement, the remainders of the monies. That money then transferred in the general fund for the budget to the state grant funding item. For auditors' purposes, that means it's no longer ARPA money. So the program money is now state grant programs. And this allocation recognizes that, for this legislation piece, that the ARPA money is being appropriated as it was appropriated, being treated for public safety salaries and benefits, because that is a simpler way to account for it to the U.S. Treasury, which most municipalities, most states are doing. They're taking it apart where you can simply make the report that you haven't had sufficient dollar items in this category, which is, and then report your calculation and show, and it reduces the administrative burden of reporting on the federal side. It doesn't change, it then frees up other monies you collected for other revenue streams like real estate and others to use for the program dollars. It's a fairly technical issue, but it matters to auditors. I can tell you that because I spent enough time with them talking to us that they'd like another line in these budget items, simply to make sure to minimize risk of having to go through an audit over paperwork compliance, because we had sufficient funds for public safety dollars. Everything else we do will still get audited, it just won't be a federal paperwork thing that we have to do for each and every one of these items. So it's basically frees up administrative ability to do it.
Does that relate back to Bill five twenty-three?
Yes, it does. So they felt, the consultants felt there was conflicting language that they could read into the, because that bill was amended, I think, three or four times. And so they thought there was conflicting language, and they wanted something just to clarify the public safety feature, so that when they're making their reports on the city's behalf, that it's clear that's what the money goes for, and therefore the state grant money that remained because of ARPA is then what's funding the programs council and the mayor were putting forth.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, thoughts? Seeing none, I will now move this to our next legislative session agenda and also requesting a report from DBHD regarding the bridge housing programs. And that concludes Budget and Finance Committee.
Vice President Green, could I just comment real briefly on the health of the general fund? I just thought, we bring these schedules down and, you know, there is an impact on fund balance. A good example is the Broad Street Market planning. And this, again, this movement of budget is just to try to maintain or get to a state of preparedness in the event that, as Neil mentioned, there is a need to, at a minimum, encumber the money, which takes budget, of course, you know, before the end of the year. It may or may not happen, but we're trying to be proactive in being prepared for that. So, but as a follow-on to that, through August, for the first eight months of this year, the city right now through August has net revenue of, it's essentially break even, but it's approximately four hundred thousand dollars on the positive side. Our cash position the end of August is just over twenty million. And the city has realized through the end of August, seventy percent of its expectant revenue. And that doesn't include what we, we always budget a fund balance usage, and that's not in this calculation. We've actually achieved seventy percent, which is consistent to where we are, being two-thirds of the way through August. Now, our break, we're at break even through the end of August, but we just went through August, which actually had one of the months where you have three payrolls and you have three check runs. So there's a tamping down of, it's heavier in expense. But for the rest of the year, it's going to be the normal two payrolls, two check runs per month. And then also, some of our larger revenue items are on the menu, so to speak, coming up in the month of September, namely the Capitol Fire Protection allocation that we get from the Commonwealth, and as well, the pension, the municipal pension state aid, which flows through the Department of the Auditor General. Those two amounts alone total around the eight-point-five-million-dollar mark. So that's, that's something, of course, this month has been heavy on expense. September should be a much, a much better-looking month. So I just wanted to summarize that real quick for you. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to veer from the printed agenda just for a moment. I'd like to, instead of moving forward with Building and Housing Committee next, I'd like to move directly to Parks, Recreation and Enrichment Committee, due to the participants having a hard stop. So I will defer to our Parks, Recreation and Enrichment Committee Chair, Councilwoman Rawls.
Thank you, President Bowers. Good evening, everybody. Today, we will be going over Resolutions fifty and fifty-one of two thousand and twenty-four. Mr. Parker, can you please read Resolution fifty of two thousand and twenty-four?
Yes.
Yes. Resolution fifty of two thousand twenty-four. A resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional services agreement with Murphy and Dittenhaver Architects to serve as the architect slash engineer firm for the recon, I'm sorry, for the restoration, rehabilitation, and reconstruction of the Broad Street Market's red brick building.
Thank you very much, is there anyone here from the administration who can speak further on this matter and give more information to council and residents?
Good evening, City Council, my name is David Baker, I am the Facilities Director for the City of Harrisburg. What you have before you would be an agreement to allow the city to enter into a contract with Murray and Dittenhaver, if I'm saying that right. And what that would allow us to do is, you know, basically get an architect on the the payroll. We could start moving forward with design services, with engineering services. Basically, the multitude of different things that need to take place before we can do any sort of construction bid or any sort of major construction on the the facility itself.
Okay, thank you very much. Oh, I thought you were gonna say something else, okay. Thank you, does, and I don't wanna say the name incorrectly, Murphy and Dittera. Have, say it, please, I don't wanna, I'm gonna hurt it, and I don't want to, I wanna give it its power, please.
You're not the first, Murphy and Dittenhaver.
Dittenhaver, okay. Well, good evening to you, is there any extra information that you would like to give us that maybe Director Baker did not? For council and our residents who are here or listening in.
Well, thank you for inviting me here this evening. Murphy and Dittenhaver Architects is a twenty-eight person architectural firm. And we specialize in historic buildings, renovation, restoration, and we have quite a bit of experience you know, in the central Pennsylvania region, including a number of restoring and improving a number of urban markets. And so we we represent a team of not just architects, but engineers and envelope specialists, and engineers of various types, structural, mechanical, the whole team that'll be necessary for the Broad Street Market project, so we're very pleased to be here. Our team is ready to, as I used the word last week in the interview, our team is ready to attack this project and make a negative into a positive, so.
Thank you for that, I appreciate that. I know someone is on Zoom at this, and please, can you say who you are from the No, they're not for us, I'm sorry, okay. Fifty-one, sorry. Okay, thank you, all right, I'll see if anyone has any other, any questions, I know there's a heart stop, my apologies. I'll just start with, I just have one quick question, because I know we have Alexander and Co., they are our project managers. And I know, my biggest question was, I know that they said they would be doing thirty percent with DBNE and disadvantaged businesses and enterprises. Is this fall into that thirty percent, and if not, where are they at now currently? With the thirty percent of compliance?
Yeah, I can't answer where Alexander, the construction manager, is. But our our company is a diversity and working with SDBEs and and minority firms is a is a major focus of our company. We were the architects on the Forum Building that was just finished, turned out great, and I think our participation was just under thirty percent, I think, on that project. So it's it's very important to us, we reached out to a number of those SDBE firms that we work with. Shepherd Associates is on our team, a number of the other ones were too busy, which is a good thing. But it's very important to us, I would just note as an example, our office is in York, Pennsylvania, we work a lot with Christmas Attics Associates Association. We we completed, we offered and completed a six-week course for tenth and eleventh grade, ten students, every day, five days a week, two hours a day, to give them exposure to architecture, planning, engineering, and field visits, so it's a ma, it's a major part of our our company and anything we can offer to Alexander and and the city to increase participation, we're we're rolling.
Okay, thank, I know there's a, did you wanna add something?
I am, I just wanted to add on the the Alexander side of things, so we haven't actually started any sort of construction. We've done some light demolition, we've done a lot of site cleanup, a lot of safety-focused things so far, and with what we have done, you know, what little we have done as of now, I believe it's been more than fifty percent, you know, minority participations, I'm sorry, say it.
Fifty percent of what?
I would say it would be more than fifty percent minority or women-owned businesses that have had that kind of work done.
With the Broad Street Market currently?
Yeah, currently, so we we've had demolition on the Broad Street Market, and we've had site cleanup, we did the window replacement, so that was lead abatement. We've split it up into, I think it was five different groups that came in and did the work out at the market, so I I can get you guys exact numbers on that, if you'd like, here in the future, and that way I'm not gonna misspeak at all, but I do believe that we have a rather high number for MBE WBE participation so far.
Okay, yeah, if you could get us the information, that would be great, thank you. I'll start here to my far left with questions, Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ross. I have more of a a comment than anything. Thank you for for showing up, and obviously, you know, I believe someone was representing keeping eyes on this, and they say you were pretty high on the mark to get this, however, I will say this. Through all the debacle through the the Broad Street Market, you should have been here earlier. We didn't need to go through all of that other process. Believe if you were here, you just you just stayed at yourself, you come in, you do the drawings, and you're ready to attack. And that was that was something that we were trying to convey to our community prior to you being here now, I think you should have been here far before then, you know, but I think Alexander did a good job selecting you, so I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you, all right, Councilman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam Chair, so just just to, for my own identification, Alexander, that firm actually chose you guys?
They were part of the selection committee.
Right, so there there are, I think, six individuals on the grading committee. Seven, so we had seven individuals on the grading committee, and Alexander had two people that are fairly knowledgeable in this specific project that were part of that grading committee. The rest were all city staff or city members, or city employees that were on the committee.
I must have been mistaken, I thought Alexander would be the actual sole entity that would handle things such as this.
No, so we we reserve the right to make all decisions in this entire process from beginning to end. Alexander will kind of guide us in certain areas, but for something such as this, we have our own procurement policies that we follow.
And a rep from Alexander wasn't able to attend tonight?
I I didn't think that you guys would need anyone from Alexander, since we were discussing the architectural side of things, but we do have multiple people here that were on the grading committee, so they can answer any questions hopefully that you have.
The architecture and the construction would work hand in hand, though, correct?
They absolutely will, yes.
I think that would have been vital, just to have their maybe comments on it, but I appreciate you gentlemen for being here this evening, thank you. No further questions.
Thank you very much, President Bowers, do you have any questions?
No questions, but I guess I was just curious why you didn't mention other urban markets that you have revitalized, including the York Central Market, the Lancaster Central Market, and the Annapolis, Maryland City Dock Market House, in addition to the Forum Office Building and the Governor's Residence. Just curious why then, I think that would be helpful in in making your case.
Yeah, I think I just said urban markets, but yes, we
You did.
We continue to be involved in York Central Market, we did a major renovation a number of years ago, we've done, helped them out on smaller projects, there's a Rack P project. We're very involved, that that market like Broad Street means a lot to the city, it's more than just a market. Same thing with Lancaster Central Market, we came up with a master plan that really addressed not just the facility, but the operations, type of vendors, so Lancaster Central Market, again, it's it's crucial institution in Lancaster, we worked with Annapolis, same thing, you know, working with their vendors and situations, and Lexington Market, we actually helped them get started in reinventing, you know, the the new Lexington Market, you know, in Baltimore, so in our region, they mean a lot to us, I'm sorry, I didn't mention that, very important project.
They are, that's okay, I don't have any other questions. Seeing and reading, I think I'm pretty confident in in the work that you will do, so thank you.
Agree. Vice President Green, do you have any questions?
Thank you, I don't have many questions, you guys have extensive experience, so I don't doubt you'll be able to get the job done correctly. I will just kind of comment, something that you you spoke of that piqued my interest is working with Christmas Attics and the youth program. It would be great if we could bring some of our youth from our local high school to be a part of redeveloping the Broad Street Market, and just get them to be a part of making that history as well, so I'd love if we could pair with you guys in Harrisburg School District, so that we can make sure we get that done, and get our kids exposure into architecture as well.
Great idea, I had the same thought, I hope we can, we wanna make that happen, so.
I agree, I, we all look forward to seeing that happen, that would be great. I saw that too on your website, thank you for bringing that up, Vice President Green. But yeah, that would be really great, so they can take advantage of that and be part of redoing it, so they have a buy-in of it and interest, so. That would be great. Councilwoman Davis?
Thank you, Councilwoman Ross, thank you, gentlemen, for being here this evening. My only question is in reference to the fifty percent MB MBE. How did the contractor, how did it come about to be about fifty percent? I know we were receiving, I know I was receiving the RFPs or the proposal for bids on Penn Bid, and I did, you know, reach out to people, businesses that I know in the city and send that information out to them, but how did that fifty percent come about? Was it through our recommendations or combination, or, because that's a high number, but I'm glad to hear.
Yeah, I mean, I I I can't pretend to know exactly how it came about, but I guarantee you it had to do with everyone's additional participation in this, I mean, I I know council reached out. We had a lot of success with Alexander, they have a lot of local contacts that are minority women-owned businesses. And they reached out to those, I I mean, I I don't discount anyone. I think that the mayor's office is reaching out, I know my office is reaching out, everyone was reaching out to local businesses. We specifically broke the project up as small as we could to allow individuals that don't have multimillion-dollar companies to bid on this and successfully bid on it. There were certain areas that we couldn't break up into more of a manageable size, and there were certain areas that we didn't have local participation, or we didn't have minority-owned business, it was local. But only because we couldn't, you know, like, it's safety-wise, it was, we were not able to do so. But anywhere we were able to do that, we took advantage of that, and and that's how I think we were able to to meet a much higher norm, a number than normal when it comes to that area.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. Will you, again, be able to give us the information in terms of who those companies were?
Yep, I have it written down here, I can I can send the email tomorrow as far as the exact contractors and what they did for the
Thank you very much.
I just wanted to
You wanna add a question?
Well, just a statement.
Okay, can I get Councilwoman Daniels' question first, and I'll come back to you, thank you. Councilwoman Dan, no questions, okay, go ahead, Councilman Rodriguez.
Director Baker, I just wanted to thank you for reaching out, because absolutely, we're looking for local firms, local contractors to help, so I appreciate the call, a few weeks back, I believe it was, when you were looking for something, so that I definitely could thank you and, you know, great job on that.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's no other questions, I recommend that we put Resolution fifty of two thousand twenty-four in the next legislative agenda.
I do have one question.
Oh, go ahead.
Do you have a business card? If you could give it to the clerk, he'll make sure we get it, thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to Resolution fifty-one of two thousand twenty-four when you're ready, Mr. Parker, you can read it in.
Resolution fifty-one of two thousand twenty-four. A resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional services agreement with Marsh Claims Solutions Forensic Accounting and Claims Services to provide insurance claim accounting services to measure and document the revenue and property damage loss of the Broad Street Market's red brick building.
Thank you, Mr. Parker, is anybody here from the administration who can give us more information on Resolution fifty-one of two thousand twenty-four?
I think this will be a joint effort between Neil Grover and myself for tonight. As far as this resolution, the limited knowledge I have on it basically is to allow the city to best optimize the information transfer and the record transfer and the efficiency from the city to our insurance carrier, also, you know, allowing the most transparency and hopefully optimizing the funding that we'll receive from our carrier as well.
If I could interrupt, I'm sorry, we have him on video now through Zoom, Mr. John Case, who is with Marsh Forensic Accounting and Claim Services.
Okay, thank you. Hello, Mr. Case.
Thank you for letting me be here tonight, a pleasure to meet you.
Pleasure to meet you as well. Would you like to add anything, or before Mr. Grover tells us more about how you will, are proposing to help the city with the claims?
Sure, thank you for letting me speak. My name is John Casey, I've been a forensic accountant preparing claims or auditing claims on behalf of insurance companies for over thirty-three years. Based upon my experience, what we can do is assist or facilitate in maximizing the recovery that you get from the insurance policy via the terms and conditions of the policy, as we have vast experience in knowing how to maneuver through all the minutia and expediting the, you know, timeliness in getting advanced payments and pushing this through to the insurance company to final resolution.
Thank you very much, is there anything else you all would like to add before I ask for questions, I don't have any.
No, only that that the second person I met at the brick building after the fire from our insurance company was a forensic auditor. And so I believe Mr. Case had worked with the same firm they did at one point. So obviously, the carrier is gonna be looking at this very carefully, each and every bill that gets submitted, and we just need someone who speaks their language to make sure that our our details are approved.
Okay, thank you, I don't have any questions after reading the resolution, I did understand, I think it's something very important that we need. And with his experience, I think that would be excellent, so I would, I'm gonna start to my far right with Councilwoman Daniels, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Councilwoman Davis?
No questions, thank you.
You're welcome. Vice President Green?
No questions, thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
President Bowers?
I don't have any questions, thank you.
Councilman Rodriguez?
No questions, thank you for joining us via virtual, thank you.
And Councilman Jones?
Yes, simple question. How long would it take for you to get through this, I see the billable hours of eighty-five thousand and not to exceed that amount, how long do you think it'd take for you to get through your assessments?
Can you be more specific on what do you mean by getting through my assessment?
Of, you're going to be, well, can you share your scope of work again, you're gonna look at, you're assessing the damages, the loss, the profits of the Broad Street Market, correct?
It's gonna be a multitude of things, it's gonna be the extra expenses and any business income losses that you have. It's also gonna be working with your local people to compile the property damage to maximize recovery based upon the terms and conditions of the policy and and what we call it, which bucket it falls under. Some buckets have sublimits, so we wanna maximize your recovery by putting it in that correct bucket, so we can expeditiously get you advanced payments and a higher outcome monetarily as a result of of putting into a claim preparation package.
So, again, my question So again, my question would be, do you have a projected timeline on how long this will take?
It will take, as long as the repair process goes. We work in conjunction with the repair work to compile those invoices, get in front of the insurance carrier so they can review it expeditiously, so we can recommend advanced payments. As long as the repair process takes, that's how long it's going to take us to work on this project.
Okay, you want to say something?
It's, look at the equivalent of they're submitting the bills for us to the carrier, so as long as there's bills.
You just got to keep working.
You got to keep working to get your money back.
Okay. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I just had one. Oh, I see it on the screen. Never mind. I was trying to, Mr. Case, I wanted to make sure I was spelling your last name right.
C-A-C-E.
Thank you, C-A-C-E.
That's correct.
Thank you. That's it for me. I recommend that we put Resolution fifty-one of two thousand and twenty-four on our next legislative agenda. Thank you again, Mr. Case, for being here.
Thank you very much. It's my pleasure.
Okay, thank you. So now we are moving back to the Building and Housing Committee. I will defer to our Building and Housing Committee Chair, Councilwoman Davis.
Thank you, President Bowers. So Resolution forty-seven dash two thousand and twenty-four is a resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional services agreement with Civitas LLC for the purpose of providing professional services to the city's Department of Building, Housing, and Development, including but not limited to technical assistance and general consulting services for general technical assistance, consolidated plan development, analysis of fair housing choice impediments, and environmental review for emergency demolition. Is there anyone here from Civitas? Okay, I did get an email that Director Martin Roberts, Gloria Martin Roberts, would not be here this evening.
Civitas would appear remotely, so were they, so did that ball get dropped, I guess? We didn't get there. So I would ask, just because Civitas is, to a degree, time-sensitive, that when we bring in Ms. Martin Roberts next Tuesday, does it spend the rules? You hear this then? They are critical to the ongoing process with the federal money.
Okay, so I would recommend that this resolution be carried over to next, our next legislative session, when Civitas and the Director of the Building and Housing Committee can be present. Thank you.
Thank you. This time, we will open the floor for public comment. Not sure if we'll have any, but we will still move forward with our housekeeping notes. Please state your name and your address for the meeting record. If you don't feel comfortable sharing your address, please share the vicinity in which you live within the city. You will have four minutes to share your comments. Mr. Parker will serve as our timekeeper. I'll begin to my right. Is there anyone that would like to offer public comment? Seeing and hearing no one, anyone in the middle section? Seeing and hearing no one, anyone to my left? Seeing and hearing no one, the time is seven twenty-three PM. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. We stand adjourned.
That's okay. No, you got a lot going on, and she couldn't be here anyway.